... today, March the first. Mr. Sloan, if you would call the row, please.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Ms. Harvey?
Mr. Wall?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Mundy?
Here.
If anyone would like to play on the lead.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, your religious hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have a pretty good group here tonight. I'm gonna do a quick explanation of why I'm holding a microphone and no one else has one. We have some equipment that is still in limbo, that we don't have eventually. Over the next few months, hopefully, there'll be mics in front of everyone. So for tonight, because this is recorded, we will kind of pass the mic along to each other, so that'll be one of the doing that, because we just don't have all the equipment yet. So I'm gonna do some introductions. I'm gonna start with Mr. Sloan, our treasurer, who's at the far end of the table to my right. He's our treasurer for one or two decades, over the past two decades. And we really appreciate Ryan. He's a great advocate for the district and takes the minutes for us. So next to him is our student rep, a junior at the high school, Maddie McKean. Next to her is Autumn Harvey. She's the newest board member, been on the board for six months. Next to me, to the right of me, is Leslie Miller, our oldest member of the board, our vice president. I've gotta take some digs, I don't want to be here forever. My name's John Law. I've been board president since January first. To my left is our superintendent, Dr. Andrew Towson. To her left is Joe Cox. To his left is Nate Mundy, one of the youngest board members in the state of Ohio, I think it's safe to say. To his left, to our table over here to our left, we have four administrators. We have our human resources director, Devin Barry. To his left is our assistant superintendent, Moisa Tice. To her left is our curriculum director, Julie Jones. And last at the end there, Jack King, our business manager, who's also been here for a long time. And we appreciate him as well. All right. You guys probably, you probably start to cringe when I do these introductions, I'm guessing. We're at item five on the agenda. It is recommended that the agenda for our March first, two thousand twenty-three meeting be adopted as designated, and we do have an agenda.
So we need to add new item number thirteen to the discussions. It's a new policy. We do not have a number yet, so it's an unnumbered new policy.
All right. So we have a motion in a second to amend our agenda to include what would be item thirteen on our agenda.
Sub moved.
Second.
All right. Mr. Sloan, call the row, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
All right. Item six on the agenda is comments from the public regarding our, one of the topics that might be discussed in our agenda. So we don't have any comments for that. We do have comments that will come later that are general comments, and we have several folks who plan to speak, and that'll come later on in the meeting. So we'll go to item seven, that's our communication that day in this quarter.
I wanted to start by saying I am also old and have been here a very long time. First off, wanted to remind everyone of the ways you can see what's happening in the school district. We have our website, westcarrolltonschools.com. You can access Facebook or Twitter at the website. Our Facebook page is West Carrollton City Schools, and Twitter is WC City Schools. So we have some dates to know. In March, third quarter will end March ninth. There's no school on Friday, March tenth, for QPT day. And March twelfth, daylight saving time begins. Turn your clocks forward. March thirteenth, the fourth quarter begins, and what all of the kids are looking forward to. March twenty-seventh through March thirty-first is spring break. These are the kids from the drone club at the intermediate school. And on the far left is WDTN reporter Kelly King. She came up to film them as they were practicing. And that's another date to know. This Friday, they're going to be aired, or they are scheduled to air on the news. And usually their newscasts are like four, five, and six. We'll be sending out a link and putting a link on our Facebook page as well, so people can connect to it. Usually that link doesn't appear until the next day. So save the date. The musical is coming, the spring musical. And I wanted to mention that even though it's the end of April, they do have tickets going on sale March first. And you can check that out through West Carrollton High School Musical on Facebook. And also the Senior Citizen Breakfast, that happens the Thursday before the musical, and that will be at eight forty-five on April twentieth. And you can RSVP to that or for that event at Two Windy Circuit at nine three seven eight five nine five one two one, extension eighty-eight hundred. If you could reply before April fifth, they would appreciate it, so they can get food ordered and all the things they need. Again, as always, watch for information that comes directly from your child's school. You'll get texts, emails, phone calls. I know earlier this week, you got one from the district about the tornado warning. And we wanted to just recognize all of our kids. They all did a great job, as did our staff members. We know too that things got a little delayed as far as letting kids out of school and bus transportation, but we wanted to keep the kids safe, so we do appreciate everyone's patience. And as always, watch out for Mr. Doyle. Eyes up, phones down, go slow, especially while on school property. And remember, the little ones are walking to and from bus stops as well, so keep an eye on it in your neighborhoods. And that is all I had this evening. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to item eight. We have two presentations tonight. The first one being from our principal at Harold Schnell, Becky Yermin. Have you go first? She's gonna be talking to us about testing.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Becky Yermin, the principal at Harold Schnell. I'm gonna wait for my presentation to come up. All right. And I'm here today to talk about assessment in the district. The first piece, when thinking about assessment, for those of you who are not super familiar, I always kind of use the analogy of medicine. So we have diagnostics and screening, similar to in medicine, when you go get your yearly checkup and you get the blood work done, and it gives you that baseline. And then, and that's how I think of our diagnostic screening in our district. So we have several screeners that we provide students at the beginning of the year and the end of the year to kind of get a baseline for how to support instruction, including iReady diagnostic assessment. We, at the elementary levels, we have a phonics screener to screen for dyslexia. The OALPS helps us determine students' language abilities, who are not native English speakers, and then kindergarten readiness assessments. And then skip down to three, I always kind of see the summative assessments, like in medicine, as the autopsy. There's not a lot you can do. You get the end of course exams, or your grade, or the, your score on the Ohio State assessments. And we can look at that, and it helps us inform instruction, but at the heart of everything we do is our formative assessments. And that's really what we, as a school leader, I look at constantly, and teachers are looking at. So I'm gonna talk about that this evening. And those include curriculum-based assessments. The upper grades use ProCore, which is like an interim assessment. We have used district writing assessments this year across all grades to really hone in on our writing, and then the restart readiness assessments, which I'll get into. So just quickly, I thought I'd share some mid-year iReady diagnostic results. So we did have our students take the K-12 reading and math iReady in the beginning of the year, and then at the middle of the year, and then they'll take it again at the end of the year. And this just gives us an idea of growth, how much growth our students are making across the district. And typically at the beginning, I mean, at the middle of the year, you would want to see about fifty percent growth, because we made it fifty percent through the year, so that our scores are looking really strong. We've made more growth in reading, and that, I think, is a washback of the third-grade reading guarantee, where students could be retained if they don't meet a particular measure on a third-grade reading test. So we have a lot of support in the area of reading. We are heavily pushing math as well, not to say that math is less important, but, and students have, they're slowly recouping from the pandemic. So math, we've seen take a big hit, and we're slowly seeing that move up. Another really cool feature of iReady is our projected proficiency. So the assessment tool allows us to kind of gauge if our students were to take the assessment, the end-of-course assessment, or the Ohio State assessment in December, how many students would meet the proficiency cut score. So you can see the different schools, and we're hovering right around fifty percent, but that would have been in December. So we're hoping for a bigger increase in the spring. And that's reading. And then math, again, we, the biggest trend we noticed in our data is that a lot of our students, our older students, really took a hit with their math skills at the, during the pandemic. So we are currently working to remediate that with lots and lots of intervention. Finally, I just wanted to spend some time talking about a new feature in Ohio, and we at West Carrollton have been really leveraging this. It's the restart readiness assessments. And they are available in ELA, math, science, and social studies. And it's been put out by the Ohio State Department to help schools kind of recoup learning loss during the pandemic. And they have created, these are free benchmark assessments, which are full-length assessments that mirror the content of the tests students will take in the spring. And then there's also these checkpoint assessments, which are, similarly, they mirror the assessment, but they're a little bit shorter. And so students can kind of get a feel of what the assessments are like. This has been really important in my building, because I have second and third grade only. And so our third graders are the first to, this is the first time they're ever gonna take one of these assessments. So we've given them the checkpoints, which are smaller increment assessments, and they give us a baseline of how our students are doing. We've incorporated as part of the TBT process, which is teacher-based teams, where they look at student data, plan, teachers do plan instruction in areas to reteach, and then we reassess. So this is an example of like the reports that we get. We get, they're automated and scored, immediate results, which is amazing. Our students in, on this particular checkpoint in math, scored pretty similar to overall, all the students that taken in the state. So we were happy about that, but we definitely had a lot of areas to grow. Similar in ELA as well. The other thing I didn't include here is, the students took comprehension questions on this writing checkpoint, but they also wrote in it, they wrote a response, a written response, and the computer scored that and gave us a whole bunch of data to use and plan. So at our last QPT day, I'm not gonna go through all of this, but I linked just an example of what we did at our QPT day, is we really went deep with this data. Our teachers met in teams. They did an item analysis where they looked at the students, how they scored, possible misconceptions, and then they created action plans to reteach any skills that they noticed students hadn't gotten yet, and then we're gonna give a post-assessment. So all that to say, I just want to end with, when we're thinking about assessments and we're thinking about data and education, it's also, you know, important that we don't just hone in on one assessment. So data triangulation is kind of like what we leverage all the time, is looking at multiple data points. So our restart readiness assessment, how students are scoring on iReady, because, you know, you might just have a bad day. And so we want to look across multiple data points when we're planning for instruction, and that's something that we're doing. And then in response to that, we are continuously providing intervention programming over and over again all throughout the day. And I'm sure your students' parents that are in here are talking about it. They get no new instruction, or NNI, who's pulling them for that, or this. So kids are getting pulled in small groups a lot. Everybody is to recoup from the lost learning, as well as to make headway moving into the rest of the year. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. See, Evan Mayd, so Evan Ivory's gonna do a presentation about sports.
Hello, everyone. Thank you to everyone that came out tonight. I apologize for coming in late there. I was handling something over at the high school. This is gonna be a great one. It's basically highlighting all of the great things that happened this winter. So going alphabetically, we're gonna start with the boys' basketball team. Varsity went twelve and ten. It should be said that they finished as the MVL division champs, and they won nine, or eight of their last nine games. So kind of adjusting to the new team and, you know, all the kids that came up to varsity this year, and they found their rhythm and put a, put a great, great run together. Going off of that, we had some MVL kids that I like to always acknowledge here. Sophomore Kyle Ingram was first team. Javin, who goes by Tank, if you know Tank, he's a great kid. He's over at the CTC. He finished second team. And Remy Gilmore was honorable mention. This one, this came out yesterday, so it's the sports writers of Southwest Ohio vote on the all Southwest Ohio teams. So Kylan Ingram was named to the second team, which is great for a sophomore. And then we had three kids that were honorable mention, which were Remy, Tank, and then Ashaya Maddox from the girls' team. And then segueing, segueing over to the girls' basketball team. They were fourteen and eight, and unfortunately, the Sydney juggernaut is on our side of the league, so we finished third overall in the league. They had a great season. They had Ashaya Sales and Ashaya Maddox and Selena Frost were first-team all-league. Then China Marzetti and Taya Parker were honorable mention. This is a very cool one. So Jordan Bannon is a senior for the bowling team, and he actually won the Miami Valley League tournament, which we're gonna, we're gonna do something new. So we've only had a few kids that have won the Olympic sports that are, you know, first, second, third. We've had a few wrestlers, we've had a few swimmers. So we are going to put together a board for our trophy case that kind of highlights them. So he bowled a seven-twenty-two series, which is two oh-six, two seventy-eight, and then two thirty-nine, which if anybody's bowled before, that's outstanding. So did a great job. Our league is very, very good at bowling. Swimming, Maddie Toll, I just wanted to highlight her. She's a senior. She is leaving, she's graduating as one of our most accomplished MVL swimmers. So this is just a picture we posted online of a sprint meet that she won, the fly-in. This is wrestling highlight. The boys are done for the year. The girls are going to the girls' state tournament, since now they have their own tournament with OSHA, and they will be competing on Sunday. So Emerson Von Dory, Dory, Dorey is a, she's qualified three times, I believe, at Bishop Fenwick. She's lived in district and then is now going to school with us. She wrestled for us last year as well. So special tonight, we're gonna highlight some middle school teams. Seventh grade boys' basketball went fifteen and one in the regular season and won the postseason tournament, which is, yeah, that's great. And then middle school wrestling, I had the pleasure of being over at Butler for the wrestling tournament, and we had middle schoolers placing all over the place. We put a story up on the website to kind of highlight them, and I posted the individual brackets. But great crop of young student athletes coming up through the wrestling program. Other updates, this is new as of today. Senior Jake Curry is going to Wittenburg for football. If you know Jake, he's a great student athlete. He was the one that we nominated for the game that Thursday Night Lights. You get to nominate one student athlete that excels in the classroom, and Jake was that. He's, he's a great student athlete. This also is new this week. So just a little highlight of Luke Martin, who graduated last year. He led Aquinas swim team to the first, their first NAIA national meet. So he set five school records this year up there. So it's in, I know it's in Georgia. I guess I left that off with this slideshow. I apologize for that. And he's competing in three events at nationals, which is, you know, outstanding. So Luke was one of our, our student athletes that went to state and has won multiple MVL events and was a gold medalist for us. Great student, great athlete. Then moving on to spring sports, just kind of wanted to remind everyone what we have to offer. You know, we have high school and middle school, baseball, softball, track, and then high school tennis. Always looking for more student athletes. Baseball and softball and track have all started. But there is still time for those that may be coming in late to the game, or finishing up a winter sport or anything like that. You know, we like to think that we don't ever really turn kids away from participating in sports. Especially always looking for track and field athletes, because it takes so many, so many kids to have a team. And then just kind of stay tuned for, this is all gonna be stuff that is on our Twitter account or the website. Spring schedules will be going up. We got those finalized to move the middle school games off of spring break. That's always a little bit tricky to do, but we managed to rearrange them. If the weather cooperates, we'll play them all on the dates that they're scheduled, but that never happens. So summer camp information with some new coaches coming in, we are going to be getting that information on there. One thing that I've been working on is getting our Athletic Hall of Fame online. You, you see it sometimes with other high school athletic departments' websites. They have, you know, pictures and everything, and I love going back and looking through that, like, oh, I didn't know they went there, but and kind of typing all of those bios up from the nights of their ceremony. It's great to kind of learn the history, and people that, you know, I've heard their names, but to go back and see some, some of the accomplishments is pretty amazing. Westcarrolltonathletics.com, we post everything to there. That's the one that sends it to Facebook and Twitter. And then also Twitter's the best spot for last-second updates. For example, the, we rearranged some practices the other day with the tornado warnings and that kind of thing. So check it out there. That's the best spot for information. And that's all I have for tonight.
All right. Thank you very much, guys, for the, for the presentations. We'll move on to item nine. Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. I ask that the board approve the minutes of the regular meeting on November fifteenth, twenty-fourth.
Okay, the motion in a second, please.
Sub moved.
Second.
All right. Call the row, please.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
All right. Item ten, Mr. Berry?
Good evening. The superintendent recommends that the board approve the listed personnel items, items ten A through ten G.
Have a motion in a second, please.
Sub moved.
Second.
Any comments, Mr. Berry?
Yes, on item ten B, I wanted to congratulate Mrs. Hafner on her pending retirement. So obviously, that means she will be vacating the position of principal at our high school. And that search has started, so the job was posted about a week and a half ago. We have twenty-five applicants and three weeks remaining, so there is a lot of interest.
Twenty-five?
But more importantly, congratulating Candace Hafner on her career in West Carrollton City Schools.
Very good. Any final questions or comments about that?
I mean, I have a little comment, but of course, you know, Candace was my principal when I was in high school, so I also want to congratulate her on her pending retirement. I know that's gonna be a big thing for her, and I only wish the best and more, so that's my intention.
Mr. Sloan, call the row, please.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
All right. Move on to item eleven.
The superintendent recommends that the board approve the listed personnel items, items eleven A through eleven C.
Motion in a second, please.
Sub moved.
Second.
Any comments?
Yes, looking at item A, always look for the opportunity for teachers to coach, so I'm really happy when I see another coach. And Joel Seiler is returning to baseball to be the assistant for our city baseball coach, and he is completing his tenth year in the district, which seems like yesterday.
There you go. All right. Mr. Sloan, call the row, please.
Ms. Miller?
Upstate.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
All right. And twelve, back to Mr. Sloan.
I ask that the board approve, as presented, the resolution to file a complaint against valuation of real property for tax year twenty-two.
Okay, the motion in a second, please.
Sub moved.
Second.
Any comments?
We have three of these at the last meeting, and the attorney, he needs to make a revision to the fourth one, so that is this one.
Yep. All right. Call the row, please.
Ms. Mundy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
All right. And of course, our addendum had item thirteen on it, Ms. Tice.
Yeah. So you have an addendum to this evening's agenda, and that is for the first reading of a new board policy. That policy is related to special education students who are placed in outside facilities, and there's a requirement for us to adopt a policy that addresses how we will interface with those outside agencies. So specifically, talks about a lot of timelines in terms of when students are placed outside of West Carrollton schools, we have others who are acting on our behalf, and what's the frequency with which they'll report information back to us, how frequently meetings will occur, all of that in line with IDEA.
All right. I need a motion in a second, please.
Sub moved.
Sub moved.
Are we done?
No.
It's just the first reading.
We're not voting on anything, all right.
This is just the first reading. I was just explaining what the
We'll vote the second time.
Yes, we'll come back in two weeks and vote on that. I didn't know if you had any questions about the policy itself.
We do have to do this by a certain timeline, right?
We do, yes. And that's why, that's why we had to add the addendum, because it does need to be passed by April the third. And so because we require two readings, we needed to add it to this fourth meeting. Otherwise, we would have had to just read it on the fifteenth and waive the second reading. So this gives you a little more time to look at it.
All right.
Okay.
So we'll move on to the agenda to our student rep, Ms. McKee. Give you the mic here.
Okay, so I'm just gonna give an update on our ground table. For those who don't know, me and a couple students outside of West Carrollton, who are also board reps, meet about once a month. And we are working on a new project of coming up with a presentation for other school districts to present how they should also have board reps. So we were all assigned to a county to research the different school districts within their county, and then reach out to the superintendent and board president about inviting them to our presentation that will be coming. So that has been set in motion, and the research and emails will be sent out shortly. I also want to give an update on the district program that I'm working on, slash Lake Club. I've met with almost all the principals, or a meeting shortly with all the principals within our district to talk about a leadership program that will, hopefully, we'll have a trial run in fourth quarter, that will be working on mentoring. And then the three Bs within our district, which is be responsible, be safe, and be respectful. Other than that, me and Mr. Law and Ms. Towson are working on inviting students to these meetings in May for recogni- recognition, recognizing, sorry, yes. So we're gonna be working with Mr. Ivory and Ms. Hafner on inviting students from around Um, so, um, we're gonna be working with Mr. Ivory and Ms. Hafner on inviting students, um, from around, uh, the senior class to be presented at these meetings, that's it.
All right, so much.
I'll elaborate just a second on the last thing she talked about. Um, every year, at least, I think probably every year way before I even sat up here, but for the last four or five years for sure, since I've been on the board, uh, in May, we always get to meet the valedictorian and senior valedictorian. Um, so, you know, they're, they're our top two GPA winners, and so we get to hear about their, uh, careers here and where they plan to go, but, um, that's typically been it, other than an occasional, uh, visit by a team or something. So I think it'd be great to have maybe senior spotlight month is what I called it, but it don't have to be that. But we're also gonna invite some students to come to both May board meetings and just talk about their careers here and what they're planning to do, and, and give those seniors a little bit of love, so that's something that, um, at least to the degree I'm talking about, we haven't really done. So I thought it'd be a good idea just to give students a chance to come and, and sweat a little bit, because they're gonna talk to us and, you know, learn a little bit about their careers here, and, um, we'll just see how it goes. But I asked Matty and, um, Dr. Townsend and Ms. Hafner, and maybe, and, and our athletic director, who left already, but, uh, Mr. Ivory, come up with some names of some kids who they thought would be, uh, ideal to come and invite. They don't have to come, but we'll invite them and we'll see if they, uh, they wanna come and just share their experiences with us. So the next thing on our agenda is something I skipped last time, which was committee reports. Um, so does anybody have anything to share, committee report last?
I'm like, I might as well split it up a little bit, um, this is a little bit of a alumni thing, but as Dan kinda mentioned, this is a second account. Michaela, uh, the girls' softball team from middle school, they're gonna have a good, because Michaela is a twenty nineteen graduate, great friend, fantastic person, and I'm just so excited to see more alumni come in and go right back into serving the community and serving their school, which is making me so happy. So I just wanted to kinda highlight her a little bit.
Good teacher.
Yeah, she's also a teacher as well, yeah, I probably shouldn't, look, and, and we graduated, you know what I mean, so like, it's a different story for me. She is also a math teacher here, which is also a really big deal, you know, but, is that, is there anything else you'd like to add? Exactly, yep.
Made kind of a storm of thunder for the alumni, uh, Michaela Woody was a graduate, uh, two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
Um, she was also, um, she received a few of the local city scholarships. She went to school, finished up school, became, uh, a teacher here, and now it's great to see her back, not only as on the teaching staff, but also as a coaching staff.
So we had business advisory council last week, we had dinner, which is required under the law, we have to meet one time a year with Montgomery County ESC along with several community businesses, um, Nate Kane as well as Autumn to the dinner with me. Um, it's, it's fantastic, we had a couple shout-outs for our career here that we're having, we already have forty companies signed up for our kids to meet with, as well as, um, our signing day, which is coming up, I just went and picked the pens up. So it's nice to be recognized for some of the things that we're doing for our children, so.
I'm gonna share something about scholarships, that, that I hope, I hope kids get, because Nathan, I have a senior, and I'm pounding him about scholarships, because heaven knows it's an species of Sinclair and associate worlds. And according to the school, um, who just sent an email today to parents to remind them that Friday, which just won't even be really seen probably by Friday, but, um, Friday's the deadline to apply for the Dayton Foundation scholarships. So, uh, please, if you know anybody who's got a senior, if any of the folks in here have seniors, and, uh, the deadline's approaching for a chance to win, some of the scholarships that are Dayton Foundation sponsored are really easy to get, but you gotta apply for them. And so, um, but he shared with me that, uh, one particular scholarship he's trying to get, there's only been three applicants for it, um, and it's just for our kids, it's not, it's not even a scholarship for, it's, it's related to the band, and so there's only been three applicants for it. I don't know how many seniors are in band, but I know there's more than three. Um, so anyway, just thought I would share that, and next is our, uh, comments from the superintendent.
Outside of the rain outside. Um, just a reminder, third quarter's ending shortly, so, um, we're looking, I can't even believe third quarter's almost over, and it's March first. Um, drive slow, please, um, as I drive in in the morning, we have our littles out, and I want them to be safe, and, um, we have a lot of parents here, so I'm looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
Mr. Sloan, anything?
Um, just a FYI, um, a couple days ago, our attorney sent us a resolution that we'll have to approve at our next board meeting. Um, it's kind of broad, it's kind of, it's kind of after the fact, and, um, the wording is, it says re- resolution ratifying the execution of the OSCC project agreement and related matters. I mean, the board's already approved the project agreement, you know, with OSCC, this is kind of just a formality, but this resolution also talks about, it just, um, specifies the fact that, you know, all the accounting for the project is going through Fund Ten, and then we will have to create a separate Fund Thirty-four, which is required by OSCC, it's, um, it's called like the half mil maintenance fund, so it requires, that requires districts for twenty-three years to put the equivalent of a half of a mil, and so for us, a half a mil is, will be about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, so we're gonna use our, uh, permanent improvement fund, which generates about eight hundred thousand a year, so for twenty-three years, we'll have to put approximately two hundred and thirty thousand dollars into this Fund Thirty-four, um, and then that money is used to maintain the buildings, um, in, in the future, so it's, it's an OSCC requirement. So just, just a general heads up about this resolution for next meeting, that's it.
All right, thank you very much. I don't see anybody from either union missing it. Okay. Um, and so another thing I skipped last time was comments from central staffs, and none of them missed that this time either, Mr. Berry, uh, any comments, sir?
No.
You didn't skip us last time, Jack was the only one who spoke, you almost skipped us.
I thought I did.
Mr. Tyce?
I, I have no comment on this.
Go on.
I just wanna mention, we're in the midst of, um, testing season, kind of a testing season before state testing season, we've got a wealth of going on. We just finished COGAT, we have alternative assessment happening soon, um, and ACT coming up in, in a couple of weeks. I just encourage parents to, you know, just encourage sleep and getting breakfast, and, um, so when the kids come to school, they can, they can do their best. And then after spring break, we have our state tests, um, from grades three to high school, so again, same thing, but we've got a long testing season happening, so. Just wanna encourage parents to keep your kids healthy and a lot of sleep and a good breakfast in the morning, so keep doing your best.
Mr. Hay?
Um, yeah, I'll just say, give you an update on the, uh, building project currently, with the seven twelve school and the second through fourth grade building. Um, planning is coming along great, we wrapped up this, this week, uh, the two four and the seven twelve, we got together to make sure that the offices and classrooms and everything were grouped and put in the right locations, so we have that worked out now, now they're, the architects are busy trying to come up with conceptual designs and start putting their stuff together. We backed off our meetings from meeting weekly now to meeting biweekly, that gives the architects and engineers a chance to start working on design, so we can start seeing progress on it as we, uh, move forward. But as of right now, we're right on schedule where we should be, and hoping for a fall, uh, groundbreaking, uh, for both sites to, uh, get the project rolling, so.
All right, very good, thank you for sharing that. Um, at this point, we are at the point of the meeting where we do invite for public participation, so I do wanna share just a couple of rules about it, and then we will, um, I think we have six speakers, uh, we, uh, calling you one by one, and as you noticed with our athletic director and some of our staff, we want you to head over to the podium for us, and that way you can be heard with the microphone and then share your, your comments with us. So just a couple of quick, uh, things for you, uh, the rules and the policy for the district basically allow for five minutes to speak, and you're allowed all the five minutes you need, we will keep a timer here, so when we get to one minute, if you are still speaking at one minute, I'm gonna give you just a little cue from over here, just a nod and let you know how you got one minute left, and then at five minutes, we would ask you to, uh, to wrap it up, so that we can get everybody in. We allow forty-five minutes for public participation with six of us, even my Georgia math says six times five is thirty, so we should make that forty-five minute time limit with no problem. But, uh, for those who did turn in a green slip, um, again, just to remind you, uh, the five-minute timer. The other thing we want to make sure is clear, is as a board, we're having a public meeting here, as you've all witnessed with the business items of the district, and so, uh, it is not a common practice for us to necessarily dialogue with you when you speak. So when you're finished, uh, you will see all of us take notes, we will all attentively, attentive, okay, we're talking, attentively listen to you, and of course, if there's any need for feedback or a response that you'd like from us, we will certainly, uh, grant that to you and get back with you. But there's not typically gonna be a back and forth tonight, we would never get through the forty-five minutes if we didn't. So, uh, also, just because I'm thinking of it right now, um, we have a work session after this meeting to discuss some of the locally funded things we have to deal with as a district for our advanced building project that's already underway. So if you're interested on hearing about some of that, that's gonna take place right after we adjourn this meeting. So without further ado, I'm going to, she's got her clock ready here, I'm not gonna start it till you start speaking, so give you a second to get started, but our first speaker will be, uh, Brittany Jewell, and, uh, I'm gonna give the next person at least a heads up, so you can get nervous for a minute. Uh, the next person will be Kevin, so you're gonna be second. Brittany, go ahead.
I have a lot to say, and this is gonna be really fast, and I'm sorry. Thank you for letting me speak, my name is Brittany Jewell, and I have three children who are in the school district, a senior, a junior, and a third grader. Um, through the years and currently, my husband and I have tried to stay active as possible with sports, the orchestra program, and the school in which our children attend as our schedules allow. We have developed strong relationships with many families in the community over the years, and those families helped raise our children, and we have done the same for them. I can say that I do genuinely have pride in our schools and community, but only now because of Hope. Since, as a parent, I feel like I've done my due diligence as a member of the pirate community, I feel that I'm qualified to speak for all families in the West Carrollton district, but first, I'd like to share a snippet of my recent experience. There was an incident that occurred at the high school December thirteenth, in which my eighteen-year-old son intervened in an altercation to protect a female. The staff member entered, a staff member entered the altercation and falsely accused my son of assaulting said staff member. Because of my son's involvement in this incident and false accusations, he was removed from the high school based on a plea deal, and so that was in lieu of expulsion, um, he'd be, uh, placed on P L P. Uh, his, uh, suspension sentence would be reduced from ten days to three days, um, with the ability to attend senior prom walk with his class. Um, he was told that he couldn't be trusted because of, of his reactivity in the situation, and my son has never been troubled, has a clean school record, he has a credit and a half left to graduate. Um, because of the administration, the best year of his life at West Carrollton was ripped away from him. The morning of the thirteenth, a child involved in the incident told a superior administrator that he was afraid, and afraid of the known bullying the district was gonna hurt him. The administrator told the child, I assure you, your safe go-to class. Another teacher in first period was warned by another student who was not involved at all in this situation, but overheard that there could be an incident. Again, no intervention. These children did what they're told to do when faced with a situation that could cause harm or injury, tell someone. And not only did the administration fail all of these children, but they helped create a terrible situation at the end of the day, which resulted in alleged assault against a staff member, felony assault charges on my son, which was dropped by the Montgomery County Prosecutor, felony assault charges against a fifteen-year-old kid, which still stands. Um, because of what happened, this administration has caused major distress with all children involved, distress with the parents and everyone else in the community who is aware of this situation, and come to find out there's a lot more. In this semi-annual school year bully report that's required by law, the school submits for public view, the reports for bullying were zero for the high school, this is false. There are many incidents that have happened at the high school, and all schools for that matter, on a near-weekly basis that are not being reported. West Carrollton School District applies and requires a student code of conduct and a parent code of conduct that we all must abide by, and if we don't, there's consequences in place for us. In our case and others, where's the code of conduct and accountability for the administration who chooses not to follow through and help diffuse a situation when a child has approached them with an issue that could have been possibly prevented? And not only do I have my story, but other parents came forward and shared their own. Different situations, same scenarios, where they've reached out to administration, yet nothing was done. No mediation, no plan of action, no solutions, no resolution. Why are we dismissing the most crucial el- crucial element inside of our buildings, safety? Why are we punishing children who are mentally exhausted from aggressors combating them every day through words, taunting, and physical altercation so severely that these students are suspended, and worst-case scenarios, victims are removed from the school, or the aggressor can roam the hallway?
You have one minute.
I have to jump to the, uh, to the solutions that we came to as a community. Um, so I've reached out to parents, and I'm just gonna go through this, and I have a copy for you guys. We would like accurate publishing of bully reports, we would like if there are any other detailed reports at any school that they reflect accurately on the document that's posted on the website. Backpacks, there's problems with kids at the high school carrying backpacks, administration is checking these backpacks intermittently, and they say that they're empty, but this is a no backpack policy that should be, um, investigated. Q R, uh, code program for students to reach out to their guidance counselors, apparently there's a thirty-day wait to get in to talk to a counselor if you need help. This is unacceptable. More mental health resources in school, Green County ESC deploys many, um, mental health counselors to the Green County schools, I believe we should do the same for us. Um, I think that we should have posted policies, thank you.
Let me say this to you, uh, if you have a list, you can certainly give that to them.
I do, yeah.
All right, so. All right, so our second speaker is Kevin, how do you say your last name, Kevin?
With great tiff, Paul.
Why, so, the next, Biker, the next person will be Jeremy.
Okay, this may sound like a rerun of something that Brittany said, oh, on old jokes, I just want you guys to know that I'm announcing my candidacy for oldest father at the school. All right, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'd like to address the semi-annual bullying and harassment report prepared by the West Carrollton School Administration and submitted to the West Carrollton School Board, specifically the one most recently submitted. Since my family has suffered a major incident with major repercussions related to bullying and harassment during the period covered by the report, I was flabbergasted to find the report and then discovered that the sum total of bullying and harassment incidents at the high school for the first half of the year is zero. Encountering, I use social media. We reached out to see if there were other parents that might be encountering their child being harassed or bullied within the West Carrollton School District. We invited all interested parties to our home for a meeting. In attendance, there were parents, students, West Carrollton city officials, and most interesting, a person who came to stand in for a teacher at West Carrollton High School who was afraid to attend, stating that there might be retribution. During the meeting, students and parents related multiple incidents of harassment and bullying that have occurred this school year. All of them stated that they had reported the incidents to school officials, several stated their reports were unresolved as the incidents were still ongoing as of the date of the meeting. None of this squares with the report. Parents and students are reporting incidents to the school officials, and yet the report shows nine incidents for the immediate, intermediate school, two for the middle school, and zero for the high school, Russell, Schnell, and ECC. Based on the tiny sample of folks that fit in my living room, the report has a severe, I'm sorry, has a severe disconnect from reality. I believe the board would take swift and effective action if they were aware of the true extent of the harassment and bullying occurring in the school district. I implore the board, or at least one board member, to take up the challenge of treating the situation seriously, finding out why the report does not reflect the situation at the schools, and bringing some accountability to this process. Accurate reporting being only the first step, once the true scope of the problem is unveiled, it remains the duty of the board and the administration to take positive steps to resolve the more important issue, that being the ongoing harassment and bullying. Sunlight is the best disinfectant. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Jeremy is at home.
At home.
Okay, Jeremy is next, and then Brittany Bailey will be after him.
I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have a child in the intermediate school who, we've had bullying issues there also. My child came home, reported he was being bullied. I advised him to speak to a teacher, which he did. Came home, advised he was being bullied a second time by the same child. Advised to speak to the principal, which he did. Third time, he came home and advised he was being bullied. I told him he has every right to defend himself. If the school will not defend him, he has every right. He was in an altercation with a student. He got one day in school suspension for that altercation. There was no file in place of him reporting it to the teachers or the principal that he was being bullied. Second incident, my son, my child, was assaulted on the school bus. He got kicked off the school bus, and I had to come pick him up from school. I was advised once the next day, they saw the cameras, that they, I would be called. I was never called. I contacted the principal two different times, never returned my call. My child came home, informed me that it was proven that he didn't do anything, told me what happened to the other child. There's a lack of communication involved in all of this. Second thing I would like to speak about, which is ridiculous that I have to talk about this, is children being allowed to use the bathroom. They are provided bathroom passes. When they run out of those passes, teachers are refusing to allow them to go to the restroom. This can cause medical issues, which I had to take my child to date urgent care for. When speaking to the nurse, they see children multiple times a day for the same incidents. I spoke with the nurse. She told me I needed to provide a doctor's note to allow my child to go to the bathroom when he needed to, which I did provide. Yesterday, my child was refused to go to the bathroom. Advised the teacher he has a doctor's note. Teacher would still not allow him to go to the restroom. Contacted the nurse today. They said that they would send another email out to all the teachers. Talked to the principal today. Her advice was to have him carry a copy of the doctor's note, because maybe her teachers don't read their emails. My son would not carry a copy of the doctor's note saying he's allowed to use the restroom when he needs to. This is ridiculous. I'm sorry, I'm upset about it, but I mean, if they have to use the restroom, they can. I understand that they want to limit how many kids are in the hallways at a time, how many kids use the restroom, make sure they're doing the right thing. But when it's causing medical issues and you're refusing, and I have a doctor's note to allow my child to do something, that's not right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our fourth speaker is Brittany Bailey. And calling her will be Tiffany.
My name is Brittany Bailey, and I'm a parent of two West Carrollton students. It was brought to my attention one day that my fourth grader was being exposed to bullying and fighting that was happening within the walls of Harry Russell. After talking with multiple parents, this is happening throughout our school district. My child was threatened for helping a fellow student that was being choked on the playground. Both of the students informed a staff member, and nothing was done to the student that was choking the other. It's very unsettling that my ten-year-old tells me that he believes some students do not get in trouble for their actions because of their students' involvement with the school. No student should ever feel this way, and never feel that their voice will not be heard. I am aware that the district's hands are tied when it comes to discipline for some students, but we have to find another way. So they are accountable for their actions. It shows that the students and their guardians, that the district will not stand for students misbehaving and causing violence within the halls. Those students who are not getting in trouble should have a safe educational environment. And unfortunately, I can say that is not happening. We cannot stop bullying like we all would like to, but we can stop and slow down the violence that our young children are seeing within our schools. I am not here to blame the school. I do believe our school has a big problem. And it takes the community, parents, and the schools to come together and solve the problem. I can promise you that if we do not start to make a change, it will continue to get worse. We're talking about ten-year-olds fighting on a weekly basis. The older they get, the worse it's going to get. It does start at home, firm believer of that. But when it's happening inside of the halls and inside of the school districts, that's when we have to come together for a conclusion. My last little statement is that we need to make a change now before it's too late for the next generation of Pirates. And I appreciate you guys allowing me to express my concerns.
Thank you very much. All right, Tiffany Reynolds, and then the last person is Linda.
My name is Tiffany Reynolds, and I want to thank the board for letting me speak. I am a two thousand graduate from West Carrollton High School. My parents graduated from West Carrollton High School, all of my aunts and uncles. My stepmom is a teacher at the West Carrollton High School. Divorced, but you know. And I moved back to West Carrollton in two thousand nineteen with my three children. I have a seven-year-old who's a full-time wheelchair user that attends the E C C in first grade. I have a kindergartner who's nonverbal and has cognitive delays. And I have a thirteen-year-old girl that is in the seventh grade. She's a member of the L G B T Q community. It's been a transition to transfer them over from the schools. This semester this year, my daughter started off strong. She was on the honor roll with all A's and B's. She does, she's affected by mental health issues. She has A D H D, bipolar disorder, social anxiety, anxiety, severe anxiety. She's a psychiatrist and a psychologist at Dayton Children's. After the first quarter of the year, she started being bullied by a student. The student started to make comments about her weight, comments about the way she dressed, comments about her orientation. Yesterday, I called my daughter to let her know that she was going to be walking home from school, because I was dealing with some other things, and she's crying on the phone. And she says, "Mom." You have to excuse us, parents. I've seen us all get teary-eyed up here, but we're talking about our kids. She said, "Today, it was my teeth." Today, she was making comments about my teeth. And I was down in Cincinnati, and I said, "It's okay. You know, just go home, but just relax, and I'll be home soon." Two hours later, my thirteen-year-old was still crying. I had to take her about a month ago to urgent care at Dayton Children's. My seven-year-old sees twenty-six medical providers at Dayton Children's Hospital. She's been hospitalized thirty-three times, and she's had nineteen surgical procedures. And I'm well-known in the hospital. All of my kids see psychology. My thirteen-year-old also sees psychiatry. And my daughter's anxiety has gotten so bad that every morning before school, she physically vomits. And I have to force her out of the house to get her to school. Her psychiatrist recommended that she be involved in a partial hospitalization program, because her anxiety was no longer being managed with medications. So I took her to an evaluation at Dayton Children's, and they said because she wasn't suicidal and she wasn't self-harming, she knows she didn't qualify for the program. So I send my daughter back to school every day, knowing that she's going to be verbally abused. I had a meeting with the principal and Megan Wardleik this morning. My communications with them have been going back months. But what really got to me was, when you have a child at Dayton Children's, they ask them questions. Do you feel safe at home? Do you feel safe at school? And I was in there with my daughter who had a sore throat, and she answered, "No." And they sent a social worker in, and the social worker said, "Where do you not feel safe?" And my child said, "I don't feel safe at school." The social worker then asked my child details about her experiences in the school, if there was a safe place that she found, what communications I have done, what steps have I taken. I spent two hours at a parent-teacher conference and never discussed my child's grades. All we just talked about was bullying. Today, I called Principal Christic, and I said, "Lily will not be at school today. She's too emotionally traumatized by what occurred yesterday." So I had a meeting with Megan Wardleik and Principal Christic today. But it is documented in my daughter's medical chart, when we go over her diagnosis, that she is a victim of bullying. And Dayton Children's knows that it's coming from here. Her psychiatrist pulled the bullying report and said, "I can tell you this information is not accurate." Because I get, I have kids in my office all the time talking about the bullying that they are enduring at West Carrollton schools. I was to the point where I called Bishop Leibold and said, "I want you, I want you guys to take my kids. I want to transfer them all over to Bishop Leibold." Because my daughter's a wheelchair user, they're not capable of handling her. So we are stuck in West Carrollton. But something has to change, because if not, my child will qualify for that partial hospitalization program. I have no doubt about that. We are getting to the point where she cannot take it anymore. Today, I changed all of her schedule. I pulled her out of all the classes and had Principal Christic change her schedule. She said, "Why am I being punished? I'm not the bully. You're pulling me out of my classes, and I'm not the bully." I had to explain to her, "This is the only option I have right now to keep you safe. And I'm sorry that you're mad at me, but I'm doing what I think is best for you." That's what I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our last person is Linda Myers.
My name's Linda Myers, and I have two students at the high school, my daughter Lily and my stepdaughter Hannah. And I have a fourth grader at Harold Russell. They pretty much said everything that I was going to say, but I will share my experiences. I'm really here today because recently, my nine-year-old came home and said, "Mom, I don't feel safe." And as a parent, that hurts. And it hurts to know that every day, I have to put her on the bus and hug her so tight, and I don't know what's going to happen that day. This isn't a joke. This isn't funny. These are our babies that we're putting in your hands every single day. And every single day, as a parent, I go to work in fear that I'm going to get a phone call. And if I would have gotten a phone call that recently at Harold Russell got that her child's hair was pulled out of her head, which my child witnessed the fight, I wouldn't have been so nice. It would have been really bad for the district. I'm thankful it wasn't my child, and I'm really sorry for the child that had to endure that. But my nine-year-old doesn't want to go in the hallways because of that incident. She doesn't want to go to the bathroom. She hears all types of stuff all day, and I know the faculty hears it. If my nine-year-old can hear the cussing, they can hear all these bad things that are going on. My child's hearing it, and I know the faculty is. My high schoolers do not want to go to the bathroom. We're talking about bathrooms again. This is absolutely ridiculous. My daughter holds it until she comes home. She's a junior. And mind you, both of my children are very good children. They are not perfect, but they are both on student council. My nine-year-old is Chloe, and Lily is. Lily is very respected at the high school. And she is the one who holds it to go home from the bathroom, sorry. So if you think that they're not vaping in the bathrooms, because you have detectors, they very much so are. We've witnessed them blowing it into their sleeves. My daughter smells weed in the hallways. Why are we allowed students smoking weed in the hallways and the bathrooms vaping? Why is this continuing? There are resources out there. It all starts with the parents. I know that. I don't blame you, and I thankful, I'm thankful for you that you are there. But there are resources to help these parents to parent. And there are resources for the children, and you guys have to do something, because I promise you, we're not going away. We're not. And we're going to stand firm, and we're going to make things happen. So I really hope, and if you need our help, and you need us to come to meetings, and you need suggestions, we're here to help. Lily is here to help. She can be a voice. And I love the leadership thing that Maddie mentioned. Maybe have a kindness, something, I don't know, where you have kind kids that get with the kids that are struggling with that. And have them mentor, and have them, you know, what's a day in the life of Lily? It's pretty awesome, I'll tell you that. But, and it starts with the younger. Do it with the younger kids. Don't start in high school. Start it with the young. There are kind kids out there. There are. And another thing is, I went to a parent-teacher conference, and I mentioned the intermediate school and everything that has happened. And verbatim, two teachers told me, "Linda, don't do it. Don't send your kid there. Your kid's too good. The bad outweighs the good, and your child will be forgotten." Those are words from your staff. They told me to go to Dayton Christian. I went to Dayton Christian, and I really don't feel like that is right for my family right now either, after the visit. So what do we do? What's, what's the answer? But your faculty is scared too. They're scared. They're telling us. They're telling us that your child is so good that they're going to be forgotten. Why, why? That's absolutely ridiculous. You have good students, and you have awesome teachers. You really do. You do. And they need to be heard, and they need to be, you know, respected. And let them lead, and let them guide the ones that are struggling, because, you know, it starts at home. And some kids aren't as fortunate as others, and I understand that. But let them stand up and let them lead, and come up with some type of solution to where kids can help kids. You know, and figure out really what's going on, and use the resources that are available to the school district and for the families. But if you're going to hold one kid accountable one way, you need to hold everybody the same. And that is not happening in this school district. I'm in property management. That's what I do for a living, and there's called fair housing. What I do for one family, I have to do for another. So you cannot treat any individual differently. There's laws for that. Okay, thank you.
Thank all of you for coming and sharing. I can tell you that I have two kids in this district, or one now, when I graduated. My daughter was bullied too, and she was so afraid that even with me by her, she was scared of the bully who was ten feet in front of us. And I'm beside her with her hand, and she's nervous and wants to walk slower than we're walking. So I know how real this is, and I think everybody here, of course, we've got a former student. We've got all of us who've had kids in the district. Autumn has a child in the district. So we're certainly aware of situations that happen and misbehaviors that happen. And we just had a safety session here a month ago where we had the district leadership come and talk to us. We're creating a committee to address hopefully some of these things. And I'm sure that just listening to some of you, as we reach out to parents that maybe help us with some of these solutions, you guys are, I'm sure, going to be willing to do that. So be mindful that that's, that's coming. There's going to be a, there's got to be an effort here to curb some of this, because we can't stop it all. Nobody here is going to say that. If you do, you're just fooling yourself. But can we make a dent in it? Can we, can we make things better today or tomorrow than they are today? If we can't, then we're all lost, because, you know, I just, I don't believe that. I think we can improve things, we can make things better. Certainly, having safety officers in our building as well is something that at least gives us that hedge of protection when it comes to really violent situations. But bullying happens, it's subtle. In a lot of ways, it's subtle, and in other ways, even if it is subtle, if it's continuous, it don't seem subtle. So we certainly appreciate all six of you coming and speaking. And if you, if there's others who want to share, we'll, we'll have open ears. Nobody's getting cut off. Everybody got their five minutes. I appreciate all of you keeping to the time. I know it's hard to get up there and talk, and you've got a microphone, videotape, and it's intimidating a little bit. So I appreciate you dealing with that as well and coming in and sharing your heart anyway. So, yeah.
Sorry. We don't usually comment, but I would like to invite all of the parents who spoke, and I have their names here, and anybody else who would like to sign up to email me. And I think we should form a committee together and work together. I would have been happy to come to your meeting if I had been invited. So that I do want to be a partner with you in this. So please know, like, this doesn't fall into pairs. I do care about the kids. The kids know that. So please let me know if you're interested. I'm going to assume the six of you, because folks today are interested. And then after you have other folks who would like to come, we can do that together. And I think that would be fantastic. I think it's a great place for us to start. So, thank you.
All right, now, in a moment, we'll have board comments here at the end, and then we are going to transition to a work session. But at this point, we are at board comments. I'm going to start with Nate, and then pass the mic down.
All right, I'm just going to leave this on the table. I think it still picks up. Hopefully, I like to talk with my hands a lot. I do want to start with you guys. For you guys to come in, to pour your hearts out, to have this conversation is a big deal. You know, of course, I can't understand how you feel as a parent. But I can understand being in school not too long ago, that I was also bullied at times. And I know how tough it can be. And so for you guys to actually speak up, to speak out, to form a coalition of people to move forward with this is a big deal. So, of course, I also wanted to mention, I was also at that meeting too. Is this, I think this is like a Facebook thing. I don't have Facebook. So I totally missed most- So I totally missed most of this. Yeah, I, uh, but please, hopefully someone can talk to me more about it. I'd like to kind of be there and kind of be in the weeds with you guys possibly. So, um, you know, I know it's tough. And Brittany, uh, you're fantastic because, um, you know, mentioning that it takes a community to work with the school to make differences is exactly what I think everyone's trying to drive home here at the end of the day. It takes everybody to do this. So I really appreciate you guys coming out, you know, and, uh, really be a part of what's going on here. So thank you. And I'm sorry that you have to be here in the first place, you know, especially with the rest of the day. That's just a big deal. But, um, other than that, I want to congratulate all the student athletes that did just absolutely amazing things. From bowling to basketball to everything. Of course, Luke is a good friend of mine, so, you know, Five Record Luke over there doing it, doing it all. It is always amazing to see. Of course, um, on top of that, you mentioned a little bit about the, what do you call it? I call it the Business Board.
Business Advisory Council.
Business Advisory Council. And, uh, you know, of course, I went to that and very cool. It was a really interesting way of kind of talking to businesses. I went last year. It's always a good time just to learn from people, do a little bit of networking. Andrea White gave an award. The M C E S C, the Montgomery County E S C was a four-star.
Four-star.
And two awards. Two excellence, which I think is pretty much unheard of, which is awesome because that's our county. So that means that kind of comes in with us. You know, there's also a thing called Ikigai.
Does it mean Ikigai we learn?
Yeah, it's like, it's a whole thing. I'll go about it later. And, uh, you know, it's just nice to see the amount of good things coming for, you know, college and readiness. The workforce, which is a really important thing. They had all sorts of fantastic information with that, which I just really appreciated. Um, it's also good to see council out here. I see you guys, almost all of you guys as a big group. Uh, so it's good to see you guys out here. Hopefully you guys can keep coming to this. I mean, it's nice to actually have that, like I said, the community, right? Big deal to me especially. I mean, I'm happy to see you guys out here. I'm happy to see you in the weeds with us. Other than that, um, oh yeah. So this state of the schools, we, I got this at the board and whatever thing and, uh, I forgot it.
B A C.
So the state of the schools, most of the article is really good. And then I got to the last page and I got to see our school district like letter grades. And let's be honest, I think it's a shocker, but these people would never get these things right, it seems like. And, uh, they gave us a letter that I'm not even gonna say because I don't believe it. So, but it's, uh, it's tough, right? Because if they would walk into the school and see the good things happening, you know, of course, coming right off the heels of what you guys talked about. It's kinda hard to see all the good things, but you know, there is so many amazing things that West Carrollton is known for. And, I mean, there's all this improvement that we've been doing over the years. And for whoever, I don't know who the heck does this, but to give us the grade that we got is just always so discouraging because I wish they could see what's going on inside the schools, the good things that's happening, the improvements that we're making. And, um, so I'm not gonna tomfool it, but.
Well, you don't have to tomfool it, but just something to point out, like with our scores, that's based on test scores, which there is lag because of COVID. We didn't take tests and everything. But we moved up a hundred districts from where we were the last time we took a test to this time. So, I mean, that, that's huge considering there's only 612 districts. So we are moving in the right direction. It takes time. Um, then we grew a pandemic and then we still moved a hundred even with the pandemic. So, um, we spoke about the assessments since your man did today and the, the, you know, the detailed instruction that we're giving kids based on their data and we're really trying to focus. So, you know, I know we're dealing with other things. We are trying to also focus on instruction and kids' education. So, uh, to move up a hundred steps is huge.
It's impressive. And it's like a little more, I thought it was like a hundred and twenty or something like that. Yeah, I mean, like, we're making great improvements. So for that, it's just, I don't know. It always irks me because coming from West Carrollton, I know the amazing things that we're doing. I know the amazing students, the hard work that the teachers are putting in. They're there, you know, so I see that as tough. Of course, I end things with a quote. That's just how I am. But it's an Ikigai quote. So this is something, everyone's gonna learn something today. So, uh, the quote is essentials to happiness in this life are something to do, something to love, and something to hope for. And that's from the book Ikigai. Yeah, so impressive stuff. Read it. Thank you, guys. Really, thank you.
Just got a couple of things tonight. Um, first and foremost, thank you, guys, for coming. Bullying has been for everything. My last name is Cox. I went to West Carrollton. It was rough. Uh, spent a lot of time out of school for doing things that I probably shouldn't have done because of the things I was called. Uh, in saying that, um, federal and state guidelines on the definition of bullying is horrible. It's absolutely horrible. But that is part of the guidelines that they hold us to. It's not an excuse for us not to do more. So we hear you. I think it's a very good idea if we can start putting together some stuff, seeing where we can go with this and, and making it different, making it ours. Uh, I can tell you that we are not alone. You can go to whatever district, you can go to whatever county, whatever state, it doesn't change. What I can tell you is it does change at home. My kid asked the other day, and I'm, I'm an alumni, both my sons are now alumni, uh, 2019 and 2022. COVID's got me a little lost in, in the years. We've kinda lost some years there, so I apologize for that. But bullying has always been part of what I grew up with. Um, I went to a private Catholic school, first through sixth grade. It is way worse there than it was here. It, it was horrible. My youngest son asked me one day, he's like, you know, what, where does all this stem from? I said, I can just tell you this, we're one generation away from hate. And what I mean by that is if it was started at home, we wouldn't be having this conversation. I'm just saying, it's not anybody's fault, it's everybody's fault. And it goes so far. And so the, uh, my oldest son lost three friends between his freshman and second year college, uh, suicide. Uh, my youngest son has lost two friends, uh, again to suicide. I have lost in this last year, three friends to suicide, uh, who have been much older. Two, I guess you could say, were ever asked, if you wanna follow that. Uh, one was military, um, but still the loss does it hurt differently. So, um, we hear you. And we'll work towards that. Um, on a little bit brighter note, um, I'm also the director of Pirate Pacts. Um, John being the president of Pirate Pacts. So it's a supplement program for the weekend for kids who are in need. Uh, we have been in dire straits because since COVID, we have lost the volunteer base, we have lost donation base, we have lost a lot. But we are chipping away and we are proud to announce a new partnership with the, um, Community Blood Center and Community Tissue Services. Their Community Relations Committee, um, will be partnering with us through a March Madness food drive. They are gonna have a themed torch March Madness, uh, three fourteen through four three, uh, kind of following along with the March Madness tournament. They have requested an items list, which they've already gotten. And I've been in communication with them for the last two or three weeks, um, over what we need and, and how we use it. So this is a brand new partnership for us, not only is it called Pirate Pacts, but also students. If you have any time to volunteer, please go to PiratePacts.org. We are always shorthanded to pack. We are feeding over 500 kids in the district. Right now it is bi-weekly because of our losses in revenue and our losses in food. If you can come up with anything, uh, even, it, it's, it's kind of a silly thing that I started back when we, John and I got together with a small group. We asked district employees for two bucks a check. Doesn't sound like a lot, um, but at the end of the year, it's over $16,000, which is 25% of our budget. During, just before COVID and just after COVID, we were one over 700 students that we're feeding. But that's a lot. That's a $58,000 budget a year. So with some creative buying on my behalf, John's out there hitting the, hitting the bushes, trying to stir up some business. Uh, local leaders, um, I'm sure Rick is. Rick put out a, Rick put a sign in his front yard for us. Um, it generated not as much food as, uh, Rick wanted, um, but it, it created awareness and that was kind of, uh, I guess you could say cannibalized into bigger things. My dad always says you're three people away from knowing the right person. So I can only hope and I believe that the Community Blood Center was from one of our employees at the high school who came through Sarah Oberman, who came through Angie Shapley and Rick someplace in that, in that group. So the powers of three that were there, uh, I thank everybody who, uh, just contributed. It's a lot. We're struggling to get through this year and we're already gearing up for the next school year. And that's a lot of kids when you talk about, what, 32, 3300 kids and we're feeding over 500? That's over 20%. That's a lot. A lot good to me. So just some thoughts, uh, I thank everybody for that. That's all I got. Thank you. Oh, Luke Martin. Luke Martin, uh, he's, he's heading towards the national tournaments. I mean, the boy's got inspiration to be on the Olympic team. Well, Mr. Ivory failed to say, he's already broke three school records as a freshman. Um, and they're, they're saying that he's just gonna blow those records out of the water coming through the, uh, through the national tournaments. Yeah, literally.
It's all over Twitter right now.
It's fantastic to watch, so thank you.
Well, it's me. I wanna thank all of you coming. My three sons went through the school and we did have issues, uh, as we're going through. And I have nine grandchildren that are scattered between two different states, not this one. And I know very well that, uh, it's happening everywhere. The one thing though, that we have that they don't is an assistant superintendent that listens to you this evening and already wants to put together a committee and plan. So that is something that the adults don't have. And they are struggling across. So I do encourage you and anyone else that would like to join with her to please do that. Because it, it takes a village. And, uh, sometimes we get bogged down in our everyday life and the kids are the most important part of it. Along those lines, um, you know, Mr. Ivory had mentioned all of our, our athletes. And the spring is coming. Do advise all of the kids to get involved. If they're involved, they're with coaches and we care. And we can help. I know I have helped a lot of kids throughout my whole tenure as a parent. And it is something, a lot of times, they don't have someone that when they get up there, you ask them how much they're worth. Nobody cares. So that becomes a child that then carries that forth. And, uh, all of us coaches, I can speak for all of them, I'm sure, would say that we all do care immensely. And we are there to take care of your kids. And we do ask that question. I know I ask that question all the time to the kids. And at first, it's kinda foreign to some of them, but then they anticipate it and they know that I'm going to ask. And then they start sharing. And that's, that's the communication and the bond. And, uh, so I really encourage all the kids to get involved. It's, I know it's spring and things are getting a little nicer outside, but finish strong and go out and join the team. And, you know, that, this spring, this last semester, this last quarter that we're gonna be in, it kind of predicts what you can do in the fall of next year. So you need to finish strong instead of going down off the cliff. So other than that, I would cast this on. Thank you all.
Hello, everyone. I also wanna thank you all for coming this evening and taking the time to express your concerns in regards to bullying. Uh, it does hurt when I hear that our students are suffering or going home unhappy or feeling like they can't be safe at school. That should be the one place that they feel the safest. So I'd like to really see that you take, uh, full responsibility and, and start maybe a kindness initiative. Going home and telling your kids, you know, how about this week you go to school and you make a new friend? Pay, pay them a compliment. I like your shirt. I like your shoes. Oh, where'd you get your glasses? Uh, just simple things at home, uh, putting ideas in their head because they are children, they may not know where to start. So planting those seeds at home is really valuable. Uh, also, I want to highlight the, uh, district's response to the recent tornado warning this week. I was really impressed by that. That timing could not have been any more inconvenient as, as the busting was coming and kids are getting out. And so I was really impressed how the, the district kept up on constant communication with us. Uh, thank you, um, everyone. Have a great evening.
Um, just as a student who does, um, go to the school and, um, who, someone who's supposed to be representing students, I would just like to add that I'm very interested because I obviously represent those who are being bullied. And, um, I'm very interested in the, the kindness sort of club or, um, whatever. Obviously, it would have to be administrative led and teacher led to initiate a better impact. But if there is any student involvement, um, that is going to occur and hopefully will occur, I would greatly like to be a part of that, so.
I know where to find you.
All right. Um, certainly, um, long before I sat here, I did what you guys did. I got up and came here and Dr. Clifford was our superintendent at that time and I can not slam anybody, but I can tell you, he certainly didn't reach out to us to form a committee, uh, like she just did. So certainly commending you for that and thank you for listening to their concerns and we all care. So we may not be able to fix it all. We may not be able to address things the way you would do this if it was up to you. But, um, if you decide on the 15th or the April, I think it's the 12th, whatever the meeting is in April, meetings that go forward and may, you, if you decide to come back here and share again, there's no statute of times you can say something. So I know the first time's always the hardest or was for me because I came here often and, and shared. Like Mr. Kessler does, he comes here religiously. He's here almost as much as we are, um, and shares occasionally some concerns he has. So we certainly welcome that. And it's never gonna be, there, there's, there was some issues last year or two in school boards around the country where people were shushed or evacuated or they had, you'll notice, there's no security guard here. There's no SRO at our door, but there are places in this country.
I'm short, but come on.
Well, typically she's not here.
Sorry, all some folks.
I can't see her. I can't see her. Well, anyway, uh, other than tonight, there's typically not a SRO in this room because people are simple. People are, uh, they're, they come, they share their, their heart and they hope to see something change when they do that. So, uh, but across this country, I mean, you, you don't have to look hard to find some crazy video footage in school districts around the country. And so, uh, you're never going to find that this board does not welcome public comments. That is never gonna happen. So, um, a couple of the things just to, to highlight with Pirate Pacts as well. In addition to what he mentioned, um, there is a company, local company here in West Carroll called Evasive, who just after we had a chat, sent me an email as well. And they're also using March Madness to do a food job. March Madness couldn't come at a better time, I guess. Uh, and they're gonna do a food job for us as well. And so if any of you have, um, you know, local company you work for, um, that might be interested in just doing something like that, uh, certainly have them reach out to us at the, at the website and we would love to, to partner with them. Uh, lastly, um, I'm a little partial to the musical because I do have a senior son who has been in every one of them except for the COVID year one, where they met in a garage. He didn't do that one, but he is Uncle Fester in this one. And, and I'm not really even sharing that particularly just because it's him. But what I wanna tell you is one of the other cast members, if those of you are familiar with the Addams Family, which I guess most of us are, one of the, um, people in the show, his name is Lurch. He's the really tall guy that has a low voice, kinda, I guess, walks hunch, I don't know. Yeah. Well, the student playing him, his name is Diego, he is going to have to wear stilts. Now, I don't know how that's gonna go, but if you're interested in just seeing, he's a pretty tall kid in the first place, but part of the reason Mr. Coleman is making him do this is because my son, who's supposed to be Uncle Fester, who's supposed to be shorter, is tall. And so to make Diego look bigger, he's gonna have to wear stilts. And he's already practicing, they're like a foot, a foot and a half, they're tall. So he's seven foot or so wearing these things, uh, and walking around in them. And he's got to dance in it and walk in it. So good luck to him. So good luck to him. And if you want to see what that looks like, come on out in late April to the Addams Family Musical at the high school. So we don't adjourn right now, we're gonna, yeah, go ahead.
Since we've got parents here tonight, I am not running for board for reelection in November. It's an opportunity, just saying. It's an opportunity for somebody to step up. I was in your shoes, same time that John was talking. We came and we talked, and we asked, and we talked, and we asked, and, well.
Now we're sitting here.
Now we're sitting here. And what we've done, since Dr. Townsend has come in, we've changed a lot. Now, things are slow. That's the way it happens. When you're dealing with state and federal guidelines, and multiple entities, multiple municipalities, multiple police, I mean, it just goes on and on. A lot of things that you don't see that goes on, it's a lot. And I was just like you, two sons in the district, I own my own company. At that time, I owned three companies. I've streamlined since then. A wife that works full-time. Sometimes you just have to shift part of it, just a little tiny bit, to make a little bit of extra room. So I'm inviting any and everybody to run for that spot. All you can do is try. And it may not sound like a lot upfront, but it makes a difference. And it, and it takes a new set of eyes every so often to get in here and to dig her out a little bit. And I know that I have not always been some favorite, and I'm okay with that. My kids and our kids came first, and that was the slogan that I ran on, was our kids first. And I'd like to think exactly what John said, we'll never deny you the chance to talk, and we'll never deny you the chance to work with us to make this a much better future. And he would help you get through the process.
So I worked for the board's election. So the deadline to actually file the petitions, to actually be on the ballot, is really coming to a close. So you can actually file to be a write-in. I'm not just talking to you, everybody, camera. You know, you can file to be a write-in candidate, which is what I did when I ran here, which was a lot of fun. No, the first time I, my petition didn't go through, but, you know, write-in isn't that bad, but. Just so you know, petitions are closing, but you could still go to the Board of Elections, four fifty-one West Third Street on the mezzanine level, go in and file to be a write-in. There is no one right now that filed their petitions yet. So it's honestly a walk-in at this point.
Petitions are closing for November already?
Yeah.
Yeah, to, to sign up for your petitions.
Yeah, so you got, you get to sign up, they give you a packet.
Oh, okay.
The packet means you go out, you get your friends and family and your acquaintances to sign. You've got to have seventy-five verified legitimate signatures from registered voters within the school district. It's, it's a very specific signature. And it has to match the way they sign their voter's registration card. So.
The number of petitions based on how many spots are open, like, there's all these rules to it.
And it's, it's not hard to navigate, and anybody at the election board can help you.
Well, and I was gonna say, if there is nothing, I mean, like Jack said, it's in November, they will probably extend it. Right now, it's primary season, so that's why it's closing for primary. I'll open back up later on for other people, but of course, because it's primary season, we need these in for primary. But like I said, if no one's gonna be in, you're gonna be a walk-in through primary, you're gonna be pretty much a stray shot for the year, remember? So, just something to look into, always call the Board of Elections, always go to the Board of Elections. Be involved in your community. And the thing is, you guys already are, people that are probably watching. But the people that are watching, I wish there was more, but it's a four-year target.
Yeah, gives you a chance to get in, get your feet wet, and start seeing how things operate your first year as a model learning. And then you can dive in from there. If I can do it, anybody can do it. That's for sure.
All right, I'll yield.
Clarify this. The Board of Education is not a primary position. You're not primary to be on a ballot. So the deadline, I think you're talking about, is if you're in a primary race.
You know what, you're right.
And so the deadline for us is typically in the summer. It's typically June or July. So make the decision. I'm not swaying you not to do that, but you got more time than a few weeks or months.
You know what, you're right. Yeah, I'm thinking of commissioner, because that's what's going on right now, is we're filing our petitions for admission.
All right, so we're gonna swing into a work session for locally funded initiatives. We're gonna talk about the project. If anybody wants to leave, this is your chance to do it. But if you do want to stay and listen to some of this conversation, you're welcome to do that. We'll take a five-minute break.